Sign up for Montgomery College Alert today. Receive college closing, delay, and emergency information via text message and email. The service also sends important information about Montgomery County weather and traffic events. MC is one of 40 community colleges selected to pilot the volunteer framework of accountability to measure success among two-year colleges. This national effort will help the college to better focus its resources and report its needs to the community. MC has signed an educational partnership agreement with the Naval Service Warfare Center in Carterock. Students will benefit from the staff expertise, facilities, and equipment at Carterock. The partnership will also help encourage interest in science, mathematics, and engineering, and help develop the local workforce of tomorrow. For more information about the endless possibilities at your community college, visit our website.
I call this meeting at Tacoma Park City Council to order. Our clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, I believe that Councilmember Wright wants to pull Consent Agenda Item B off the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we no longer have a consent agenda, so we will take them up in the order that they're in, but not as a consent agenda. And scheduling update for the next couple of meetings. Everybody should remember that a week from today, Monday, the 21st, city offices are closed for the President's Day holiday. Our city council meeting will be on Tuesday, February 22nd, and that will be Ward Four Night, and that will also be a night where we have Council Direction of the City Manager for Budget Priorities and a work session on use of speed camera funds, which is of course tied to budget. The following Monday, the 28th, we're due to get an annual report from the Police Department, and we have tentatively scheduled second reading resolution approving Flower Avenue Right-of-Way Annexation. And that takes us about as far as I feel comfortable mentioning any items, since the agenda seems to be constantly shifting these days. Time for public comment period. If anybody would like to comment on anything that is not on our regular meeting agenda, so that's anything on the work session and anything not on the agenda, if you'd like to make your comments and identify yourself, and please hold your comments to three minutes. Mr. Lawrence.
My name is Pat Lawrence. 76th and Cedar Avenue. Do you copy? I want to know, if you guys have been following that situation in Egypt, how it's proven that we can, nonviolent protests can make a big difference. The demonstrations do work. If we have to be perseverance at it, we can do it, because they overthrew a dictator. And now they're working on making their government a better government for themselves, you know, with fair elections and all that. And I think it's great, and I think, you know, that the people here at Tacoma Park and everywhere else around the country can take a lesson from the people of Egypt. Remember, demonstrations do work. You've got to keep hard at it, keep strong at it, like I've been trying to say for many years. You can't just give up and say, "I'm too tired to go to this, I'm too tired to do that." Well, remember, the people of Egypt were not too tired. The football game is more important right now, I'll do it some other time. But the people of Egypt did not say we'll do it some other time. They did it right then and there. Some things cannot wait. We want to stop this war. We can follow the example of the people of Egypt. Stand up for what we believe in and put an end to this war. We can do it. We are the people. And Egypt had proven it, it can be done. We don't have to go down there and blow up buildings or bomb planes. It's not necessary. Violence is not necessary. You know, they had a little bit of a problem there, but they had to defend themselves because the government started to attack them. And they just made a perimeter around themselves and dug in their heels. And they used no, they did not use violence after that. And I think, you know, the best thing is, I think the best thing is, is we should follow their example. We should all get together, we should say no to this war, and get up and have demonstrations, and make sure we stick to it. Stick to our guns. And Tacoma Park is a city full of activists, we can lead the way. And also, I'm still inviting all the children from Young Activist Club and the other people around the city, the schools, and the families out there who are listening tonight, to bring your children to Ward Four Night. All the children of Ward Four should come up and speak out about how the gangs are affecting them, how bullying is affecting them in school, and how poverty is affecting them, you know, how drugs and alcohol are affecting them, and how it's affecting their friends. And I think we should get up there and speak, and the children, we should listen to them as the children get up and speak. Again, we can take a lesson from the people of Egypt. Get up and speak. Let your children speak. We can learn a lot from them. They are going to be our future leaders. Learn from Egypt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make any comments?
Hello? Hi, I'm Marty Itner. I am the Friends of Sligo Creek steward of Section Two, which sits below Washington and Venice Hospitals Steep Hill, where their service road, loading dock, and parking lots sit. From above, you can see Sligo Hill, Sligo Creek, but the sloping hill is not visible because of the sharp drop-off. From below, the view is altogether different. For over 10 years, I have walked my dog on the path between the creek and the hill. My photographs that you have in front of you there show the neglect of this natural area. Trash is blown or thrown over the hill. Alarming erosion is caused by storm water rushing into the overmatched drains, and invasive plants are choking out our native species. But I'm far from ungrateful to the hospital. They've responded to my requests, they have cleaned up the hillside, they have removed English ivy from their trees, they fixed the sinkhole next to Carroll Avenue Bridge, and made an effort to control the stormwater. At Venice University, students pick up trash in Sligo Creek every April. Not only that, my husband and I walked to their emergency room, and I once underwent emergency surgery by their wonderful team of healthcare professionals. But the neglected hillside has become a sad metaphor for WA's relationship to our neighborhood. After reaching an expansive expansion agreement after many hours of negotiations with a community, WA decided, behind closed doors, to pull up stakes. I wonder, why did we go through that charade? Did the hospital care that our neighbors, who gave so much of their time to find a win-win solution, were scapegoated by politicians who implied we had forced the hospital out? My sense of betrayal has led to a feeling of mistrust. From what history has shown, how can we believe what WA has to say? I do believe January's fuel spill was an accident. No one wants to pollute the creek with red diesel that I still smelled on my walk today. Shouldn't their staff have been checking on the generators on that weekday afternoon? I'm deeply concerned when it's time for WA to leave the Tacoma Park campus. There will be buildings demolished and generators dismantled, including unearthing diesel tanks. I shudder to think what might happen to poor Sligo Creek during this activity. I implore the city to take an active role in safeguarding the upcoming transition. We need a written promise from the hospital to take an environmental action such as professional stormwater management program, including repairing the enormous ravine that will soon become another sinkhole, rain gardens both above and below the hill, automatic quarterly trash pickups, and the removal of invasive plants. I am asking WA to come down from their hilltop to forge honest relationships with Tacoma Park and Sligo Creek.
Whoa!
Good timing.
Perfect. Thank you, Marty.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else have public comments? Okay, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Robinson.
I have a couple of things. Went to the budget game on Sunday. I enjoyed it, and I thought it was productive, unlike all the other comments about it. There were rules on how chips could be taken off the board and put back on the board, and one particularly interesting question I got was about buying the streetlights, and if now is a good time, and how to represent that on the board. And the, it became somewhat complicated because that's a, there were some financial details we just, we didn't know at the time. But it was, I found it interesting that that kind of strategic thinking was there as well as the, as the attention to the rules of the game and how it was played. So thanks for bringing that together, Mayor, and others. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the resolution we passed, or was it the ordinance about the speed bump on Sherman Avenue sometime back, a couple months ago. The process that we pursued in that was that the street circulated a petition, was signed by majority of the residents on the blocks. They reviewed it at their, at their, in Neighborhood Association meeting, and then it came before us. When it came before us, we got testimony from our engineer and our, and our, the head of our Public Works Department, Darrell, who said they didn't think it was a good idea because of the steepness of the slope. And at that point, we went ahead, except for Fred, and voted to pass that, to allow that speed bump to be put in. But since then, some concerns have been raised, and I've spoken with Ms. Braithwaite of Public Works about the liability that we might incur if somebody slipped on the way down in an icy, in an icy patch in the wintertime, or if they were trying to get up and they got over the speed bump in that steep part and slipped and couldn't get up and back into somebody. It's that liability part that concerns me. And because of that, I, and as far as the process went, I wasn't, I'm not, I can't remember a time with a speed bump where we got staff comments saying that it wasn't a good idea. This is a time when we got that, that comment. And so I'm concerned enough that I'd like us to table the installation, or give ourselves a chance to review that particular speed bump with an eye towards evaluating our liability.
So I want to, I want to thank the council members who went to the Tacoma Park Folk Festival activity at Capital City Cheesecake this week on Thursday night.
That was great.
I had wanted to go, but I had to do something else, I'm going to tell you that story in just a minute. But I heard that it was a great evening, and that it drew a lot of business to the Capital City Cheesecake, and that the performer was very good, and people were very appreciative. There's three more, so I hope you guys get a chance to go to this. It's kind of an interesting thing that the festival is doing, trying to create a year-round presence in the city and connect more with the businesses, and have a better business relationship, and provide support to the local businesses at the same time. So hopefully, we'll have some other concerts like this and some of the other smaller businesses. So here's my story that I'm, that I'm going to tell. So I went to, I had to go to this meeting instead at Aspen Court Apartments, and I don't know if you all remember this, but over the last few years, the Aspen Court Apartments, some of which are in pretty terrible disrepair, the three buildings that are there in this, in this cul-de-sac, one of them is completely closed down.
Oh.
And the other two are, they're open and have tenants in them, but have various security and other kinds of issues. And so I've been getting calls from constituents about what's been happening with the transfer. At this point, all three of the buildings are owned by HOC, the Housing Opportunity Commission, which is, is not a county entity per se, but is licensed by the state, receives some funding from the county, receives funding from the state through low-income housing tax credit, and they're taking these three buildings, which used to be owned by different folks, and have, are creating kind of a little complex. And the idea is that 50% of the units would be affordable to people at 50% of the area median income, and the other 50% would be market rate. And so I went to this meeting to listen to the folks' concerns, and it started off on kind of a funny note. The guy had been calling me but hadn't seen me before, so he watched the council meetings to see what I would look like, so he would recognize me when I came. And so I got there, and the first thing he said to me, he says, "You're not as fat as you look on the camera." And I said, "No, seriously."
He really said that?
He really said that to me. I said, "Wow, okay, well, thank you." "From now on, I'm going to do the council meetings like this," so I was like sideways or something, anyway. So I'm going to have to watch myself and eat less, I guess. But anyway, that was pretty funny. But then he takes me in, and I get to go to the meeting, and what struck me at the meeting was the tone of the Housing Opportunities Commission. And I thought they really weren't very nice to the tenants. And so these, these people that live in these, in these units, which is regular, ordinary Tacoma Park citizens, who lived in rental units that were controlled under the, under the rent control ordinance, or rent stabilization ordinance. But the attitude of the HOC project manager was like they were there to get something for nothing. And so she was, she was talking about, one of the complaints that the folks had was that they moved the folks from, they were going to move the folks into this vacant building once they got it rehabbed. And so they called everybody and wanted to get them qualified for the low-income housing tax credit qualifications, and then they were going to move them in, and they were going to change their rents, but that wasn't what really, we had all agreed to. You know, people were supposed to be able to stay in their same places at those rents. And then we get there in the meeting, and the woman says, "Well, that was what I was going to do 30 days ago, but now I think I'm just going to rehab all your units in place." Except she isn't communicated to this, to them. So they all think that maybe they're all going to have to move into this other building, which is in totally derelict condition, and they're actually going to have to redo from kind of top to bottom. And they're scared of that. It's not what their home is. I was amazed when some of those folks had lived here for 30, 30 years in this, in these same units. The other comments that were made by the HOC were that, well, like there was one woman who's lived there for a long time, her kids have moved out, and so she's living alone in a two-bedroom apartment. She says, "Well, you can't just be rattling around in that large, two-bedroom apartment because we have to have, you know, we have to have a good use of our affordable housing, and you're, you know, that's not, there's not enough of you to qualify for a, for a two-bedroom house." Now, keep in mind, this isn't a person who's on a voucher. This is just a woman who's lived there for 30 years, paying regular rent, but now all of a sudden, there's this idea that she's got to fit into the affordable housing mix, and then there's a question of how much housing she deserves to have. And this was just really, I was really offended by this. There were other things that happened, and one of the other things was, I guess, some people live in units that have cathedral ceilings, and HOC wants to move them out of those units because those would be more valuable as market rate housing. So they'll still provide them with a two-bedroom apartment, but they won't get to have the nice one with the view and the cathedral ceilings. So I think this woman thought that she was, and sometimes I think she thought she was being funny, or she was being familial, or she was being like a good guardian of the, of the public trust by best utilization of the affordable housing resources, but what it really was, was just condescending and really bothered me. So I think that we need to engage this process again and ask the HOC leadership to come before the council and explain to us why they think it is acceptable to treat people who've been just living in their units for a number of years and paying, paying their rent, and had this agreement that HOC was going to come and rehab the place, and they were going to get to stay in their units, and they were going to get to pay the same rent, and now they're being, I think there was, the underlying tone of it was really distasteful. And, and I hope that we will reengage this process as a council, because I think there's something really not right happening there. That's my story.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended the budget discussion. I found it absolutely fascinating. It's always interesting to hear what folks both know about the city's finances and what they don't know about the city's finances. There were lots of really thoughtful suggestions, comments, and discussion, but at least in the group I was in, there was a discouraging undertone. You'll see why I say discouraging in a moment, in that people wanted their service, there were several things. One, they wanted a particular service that they benefited from, but didn't want anyone else to have some other service that they didn't care about, you know, like on the other side of town, something like that. "Well, I don't care about that part of the town because I never go there." That kind of thing. And then there was just a general sense of not being willing to pay for services, and it's a little, it's a little discouraging. I think folks have to think about what their attitudes are about, you know, city services. They're, they're something that we pay for through our taxes and of various kinds, and if you don't like the mix, come and talk to us, get on the council, you know, figure out what to do, but I think that's the way to go forward, not to do this thing of pitting my, you know, "I'm opposed to service X because I don't use it," even though they might have used it in the past, but don't now. So I hope folks will give that some serious thought, and I will stop there.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for not being able to be at the council meeting next week. I have to travel for, for business. Unfortunately, I'll miss both topics that I want to talk about a great deal, which are the budget priorities and the use of the speed camera funds. But I will try and impart those comments by email to my council member, council colleagues, and they can consider them in their talks and deliberations. The second, I want to apologize for being, not being at the budget game. I heard it was interesting, but my son turned four last Wednesday, and we had his party on Sunday. So sorry for both of those things. And then the third thing I want to apologize about is, I really feel bad, because I feel like I did a bad job in terms of understanding what the speed camera money could be used for. And I'm actually quite embarrassed, because I went and looked at the actual law, and there's been like a lot of debate back and forth, what we can use the funds for. You know, we've asked the question, apparently, we were told something, and I guess that was the right thing, and I just didn't understand something so simple. But this is what the language says, since the law has been amended, I think, a little over a year ago, or less than a year ago. It says, "May spend any remaining balance solely for the purpose, solely for public safety purposes, including pedestrian safety programs." That's it. There's nothing else. It's not like confusing in any way. Here, I was asking the city attorney for an opinion about what the law said we could spend the money on, and it says, "May spend any remaining balance solely for public safety purposes, including pedestrian safety." There are hundreds of things related to public safety that we could spend this money on, and it has nothing to do with whether it's a capital project, or whether it's a new expenditure. If we wanted to take all the money and simply deploy new police officers, we could, or pay for existing police officers, we could. Or, as I would propose tonight, pay for the new computers and police cars. And the reason I really want to apologize about this, because I misunderstood. And when there was sidewalk work going on in my ward, I was under the understanding that we, we really didn't have a lot of flexibility on how to use this money, that one of the main things we could use it for is pedestrian safety, and not a lot of other stuff. And so when you say pedestrian safety, there's speed bumps, how many speed bumps can we put in, there's different traffic coming. The big, one of the big expenditures, expenditures we could use was on sidewalks. And I justified that to my residents as the reason why we were spending money on sidewalks, because that was my understanding. That's what I thought, I was, I was told by city staff, but apparently I wasn't, I haven't had a chance to go back and look, look at the tape yet. But I want to apologize to people for that, because I think it's actually absolutely ridiculous. We could, we're in a budgets, tough budget situation. We could be using this for a lot of things. We could be using it to install streetlights. You could probably even make the case we could be using it to buy our streetlights, because if you could improve the performance of the streetlights, there'd be more light on the street, and it'd be better public safety. There's a whole host of reason, a whole host of things you could legitimately justify under public safety. So I want to apologize for that. And really, I don't, I don't know why I was asking for an opinion from the city attorney when it's very simple and straightforward like that. Last, next, I just want to comment on the Folk Festival event. I thought it was great. Thanks so much. A very energetic musician. I'm happy to learn that, I think at least two of the next three concerts are, mini concerts are actually like youth musicians, right? I think there's a, there's.
I think all four of them are supposed to be, but I don't.
Maybe this guy was, I don't know.
He's still good at night, was.
Yeah, he was. How hard is that?
Young.
He was younger than me.
That's harder.
He was, I mean, he was a college student, probably, I would say. But I think there's like a jazz.
Scientist at NASSA.
Like a teenage jazz musician ensemble or something, and then the band that performed at your house.
Yeah, Ladel Fife.
Ladel Fife. And I'm excited to try and bring my son, who's a budding guitarist or ukulele player, so I'm excited about those. Thanks for pulling together. Last week, John Ursayola was here, and we talked about every dessert gourmet and the state of that restaurant. I don't have any specific update, other than to say that the paper's been taken off the windows, and it looks that the interior of the restaurant has actually been restored quite, quite nicely. There's brick walls in there, a full bar, it looks great, lots of different beer varieties, it seems like, so hopefully, that's a sign that it's moving in the right direction to reopen. And then lastly, I just want to second Colleen's request to have the Housing Opportunity Commission before us, just to make sure. I know sometimes council colleagues say stuff, and then the staff assumes that it's just one council member who wants that. I just want to make it clear that I second that, and I think city staff should schedule, along with, working with the mayor, to have them come in and explain what's going on in there, in the process.
Councilmember Schultz.
I wanted to use this op, this time, as an opportunity to express my thanks to city manager Barbara Matthews, and also, in their absence, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission's Parks Division, for a task that they undertook fairly expeditiously in my ward. It turned out, let me, just wanted to tell you what this was about, because I think it was a very significant thing, and it's kind of coincidental with the testimony that we just heard from Marty Itner with regard to the problems on the hills, hill behind the hospital. It came to my attention, thanks to our former council, city council member Donna Victoria, several weeks ago, that down in the Stream Valley of Long Branch, where Long Branch Stream and Sligo Creek actually come together, just upstream from the, where New Hampshire Avenue passes over Sligo Creek, that there was a homeless encampment down there. And I went walking down there. And I went walking down there one day to see what she was talking about and didn't see much and I thought, well, I don't understand. So I kept walking and thinking, took another hike through there and finally discovered behind a lot of briars and brambles and vines and other stuff, which is pretty dense in that area because it's just a natural area. It's not part of the actual playground or park. A rather sizable encampment. And I brought this then very quickly to the attention of Barb Matthews and suggested that there might be a good idea to have a meeting and she suggested to the contrary, it might be just better for her to use her good offices with the Parks Division to get them as quickly as possible to come in there to investigate what it was, since I didn't particularly want to try to do that myself. It was a bit intimidating and sure enough, that's what they did. And so last week, one day last week, about 8:00 AM in the morning, they brought in a front end loader and a couple trucks and a crew of seven workmen and started work and it took them at least a whole day, if not longer, I don't really know for sure. I don't know how many truckloads they took out of there, but this was an encampment that had apparently been there for years because a lot of the rubbish, trash, whatever you want to call it, was overgrown with ivy and yet people were still, people were there as of the evening before by evidence of the fact that stuff that had been present there, somebody was living there and the next day when they came in to clean it out, their personal effects were gone. There was also a lot of construction material that had been thrown down the hill from the parking lot behind, adjacent to the Bright Light Baptist Church. So I would estimate they probably took about six truckloads of trash and stuff out of there. And I think all of this happened in the first place because that's an area that is generally not accessible to park users. It's a naturally wooded area, but what's happened over the last few years is that porcelain berry has grown abundantly in that area and it gotten so thick that you cannot, you simply cannot see into it. There's a dirt path along the stream, but one got so dense and there's also an awful lot of what I call, this isn't a Latin word, but I call them sticker bushes, things that kind of want to keep you from going forward when you try to walk through them. So that it's just very intimidating and scary and to realize that within 100 yards of where children have been playing, we've had people, Lord knows how many people for how many months and years have been living in this area. It's a bit frightening. We need, so we've got a problem with invasives that I'm hoping that the Parks and Planning Commission will try to address. I understand, I've been informed that this is not an unusual problem, is that this, these homeless, homeless encampments have been cropping up throughout the county in these park areas, which are fairly remote, and that it has created an ongoing challenge for, for the Parks Division. And of course, it's an ongoing challenge for those who want to try to provide help to the homeless population in our county as well. I don't want to make light of that fact either because it's a human issue as well as an ecological issue and a safety issue, but I do appreciate the work that was done. This was step one. Step two is to try to get these endless amounts of English ivy and porcelain berry and other invasive species out of there so that if we're not going to actually literally use that area, at least it's in its natural state with natural and local species and people can at least see into it. Because right now, even in the wintertime, the overgrowth is so thick, you cannot see into it. It's just like a jungle. So, thank you. That's all I really wanted to say, just to bring it to people's attention and to let people know what a concern this has been for the people in this area, which is really on the boundary of my ward and Councilman, Councilmember Clay's ward. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but certainly after hearing Councilmember Schultz's description of the recent activities in the park, I would just like to ask if maybe we could schedule an agenda item to see what the beautiful people of Progressive Tacoma Park could do to maybe provide some resources for those homeless people during these bad economic times and we have people in a situation that don't have someplace to live and I'm certainly not going to judge what took place in Ward Six because I only know what I've heard tonight, but I find it to be a concern that we have people in the community, that live in this community, that don't have a home and that our police should have someplace to direct those people when they do encounter them in a place that the community doesn't want them to be. And I think the city and the city council should strive to do more than just drive them out of our community. Anyways, I just, I want to take a minute and voice support for Councilmember Robinson's request to revisit the safety issues of the speed hump that was approved by this council for Sherman Avenue. I know we maybe did hear some of the safety concerns, but I think that the community still has concerns that we should discuss those thoroughly again and make sure that this council does understand those concerns and has made a well-informed decision. And then lastly, I wanted to invite all of Ward Four members to the Ward Four night next week. It's on Tuesday evening at 7:00. I'll mention there's going to be food reception, but I encourage the residents of Ward Four to come. You know, we have a lot of tenants that live in Ward Four, from, live along Maple Avenue, especially between this community center and Sligo Creek. I think in listening to Councilmember Clay tonight, she has an appreciation of some of the concerns that face people. I think it's important for the residents of Ward Four, who maybe do have some unique concerns, to come down and talk with council members and share those concerns so that everyone here on the council maybe has a broader understanding of the things that are important to the residents of Ward Four. So I encourage you to come on down. Thank you.
And I have a couple of things I want to mention. I will try and go through them fairly quickly. The first thing I wanted to say was that I think it's always important to note the passing of some very helpful and prominent members of the community. And Councilmember Robinson and I attended a memorial service on Saturday for Bob Griffith, who died about two weeks ago, has lived on Grant Avenue for a number of years and I knew various things about him, that he was the provost and the chair of the History Department at AU. He'd always been active in various neighborhood issues and dog park and any number of things. Was always a very helpful and intelligent advisor on anything that I ever talked to him about. And one thing that I learned about him that I hadn't known was that he had been, when he was all of about 28 and living in Georgia, had organized the second delegation from Georgia to the 68 Democratic National Convention in Chicago that was trying to get seated instead of the delegation led by the governor at the time, Lester Maddox. And so it was very interesting to learn some of those things and joined the, I would say, 350 people who were at that service and it was very moving and his wife and children and grandchildren still live in the city and our condolences go out to them. I wanted to note briefly, the Budget Game is going to have some additional dates. There are dates coming up on the last weekend in February and early in that following week in early March and I will have confirmation of those dates and times at the next council meeting, that there will be opportunities to play the Budget Game and there will be additional opportunities and I know that some neighborhood associations have also expressed interest and so any of my colleagues who have any particular groups or suggestions, if we can coordinate those and we will come up with some dates and times. And I also thank my colleagues for coming and there were 25 people there yesterday and it was very heartening for the rollout of that. I wanted to just note a couple of things that I've been involved with over the last week. I was at the, I was down on Capitol Hill last Tuesday for a press conference on asking Congress not to use water bottles. I was one of three speakers at that press conference and they asked me because the city doesn't buy, doesn't purchase bottled water and it was, they felt, thought it was very important to get the local perspective in trying to convince Congress not to spend $860,000 a year on bottled water. And so we hope we will have some success. I was at the Maryland Mayors Association Conference in Annapolis on Thursday and Friday last week and there were a number of good things going on there and one of the things that we did was have the opportunity to attend the Montgomery delegation hearings on Friday morning when the delegation meets on local bills and the Tacoma Park alcohol bill was up for vote and the delegation passed it as proposed and amended by them to follow what we had requested with only two negative votes. So that now moves to the, to the House and then we will have to go to the Senate as well, but we are one step along in that process and they basically kept it as we requested. So I thought that was good news. I also spoke at a conference this morning downtown. It was the National Association of Regional Council's Conference of Regions and I spoke on a panel with Tony Griffin, who's the CEO of Fairfax County, and we talked about homeland security and establishing regional coordination through local policies and that was a very interesting conference to attend and if anybody, my colleagues want to see the program, I've got it up here. I also, in my, one of my many days in Annapolis last week, talked to some folks who are putting together a coalition and it's called Join the Make Pepco Deliver Power to the People Coalition. And it is being put together by the people who in the past have put together the Maryland Cares Coalition, which defeated the sale of Care First to Well Point, and the Stop Slots Maryland Coalition, which delayed passage of slots for five years. And they're looking for municipalities and individuals to join that coalition and make sure that the state legislature and the Public Service Commission do what needs to be done to make sure that we have adequate power. And I will have information on a website that should be up shortly, but if anybody's interested in contact information, until that website is up, they can contact me. Also, remind my colleagues that this Thursday night is the Maryland Municipal League, Montgomery County Chapter Meet and Confer meeting with the county executive, Mr. Leggett, when he will talk about his proposed budget and the effect on municipalities. So I would encourage all of us to go. That's at 7:30 in Rockville at the County Executive Office Building. And just two quick thoughts on items that my colleagues brought up. The Speed Camera Fund discussion will be next week and the Councilmember Robinson's request about the Sherman Avenue Speed Hump, what I would suggest as we go forward is to get input from staff to consider, depending on that input, how to go from there. My understanding is that the Speed Hump was scheduled for installation in March, so I don't think we need to take any formal action yet, but if we can get some more information and then depending on that information, it's possible that we will put something on the agenda to rescind or modify or amend depending on what we want to do and what information we get. So we will get more information and keep track of that so that we don't delay too long in letting people know where that's going. And now it's time for the city managers' comments.
Bruce, can I just make one quick...
Thank you for bringing up Bob Griffith. I also want to send out my condolences to his family and I support Colleen's notion of bringing HOC in front of us as a landlord in the city. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, Ms. Etno brought up the diesel fuel spill from Washington Adventist Hospital. I know Councilmember Snapper and I had had a couple of email exchanges over the last few weeks and thought it might be helpful to have the hospital officials attend tonight's meeting and just briefly address what happened that evening and what measures they have put in place to prevent a similar occurrence. Is it Mr. Teague, are you going to be the speaker this evening?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Stocks, I'm the president of Washington Adventist Hospital and thank you for having us here this evening to talk about the unfortunate circumstance that happened on, I believe, January 27th. And as everyone knows, we had a, I personally was caught in a snowstorm that happened on January 27th and my commute home that night was actually somewhere around eight hours going from Rockville to, to All New Area and I hope I never experience that again. Through that process, of course, we lost power, as many people did across the region lost power. And we have a system of generators in place that go on in the event of a power loss and in particular, what we call the Conference Center Building, I think all of you are familiar with that red brick building that's behind the white building there on the campus, we call the Conference Center. That generator was put in, pressed into service. That generator has a, has a automatic shut-off switch that malfunctioned and unfortunately did leak diesel fuel out that tank. And, you know, it leaked somewhere in the neighborhood of 200, 250 gallons and we're, you know, one gallon is too much, half a gallon is too much fuel to leak out and it's very unfortunate. I'm sorry it happened. I apologize certainly to this, to the city council as well as the community as well. You know, we value the creek, we value the hillside and environmentally speaking, we want to do everything we can to work collaboratively with the community to make sure that the hillside and the creek are clean and pristine. We have implemented a process as a resolve that spill to, when that generator has to come on, is to have a person there with the generator and have it be in manual mode, not automatic mode, so that particular occurrence does not happen again. Also, because of the good work of the community in notifying us of the spill, we immediately called the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue and the Maryland Department of Environment and they came out to the site and worked to mitigate some of the issues. We also hired a private company to come in and do cleanup as well. More particular information I can ask Mr. Teague, who was our vice president of operations I brought with me here this evening to answer any more detailed questions you may have about it, but again, very sorry that it happened. Even a teaspoonful of diesel fuel, any kind of fuel, is too much and we are going to redouble our efforts to make sure that... are going to redouble our efforts to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Were either the hospital's normal maintenance schedule for that generator followed, and does that abide by the recommended maintenance schedule for, by the manufacturer?
Yes, there is a, a routine, there's a process to maintain all the equipment, such as generators and other types of equipment on the campus. Also, many of you probably know too, we're under what they call Joint Commission. We're accredited by the Joint Commission, which is a, a body that, that across the United States regulates hospitals and for safety, patient safety, environmental concerns, just a whole variety of things. And as part of that oversight that they have, we have very extensive logs that we keep, very detailed logs about the maintenance schedules and the records of all that equipment. And it's scrutinized continuously by, by the folks and Dean's, under his responsibility in terms of plant operations. And indeed, all those maintenance schedules are followed very, very closely. Unfortunately, in this situation, this, this shut-off valve malfunctioned.
Thank you. I appreciate your coming here, Mr. Stocks. And I also appreciate the efforts you have made to clean up the area between the hospital and the creek, that whole hillside. It's difficult to do, and I appreciate your efforts. Community, of course, remains concerned about when these things happen, and there have been, not a lot, but there have been a number of, a variety of incidents of one kind or another. And so there's a generalized concern that there have been incidents in the past, should we expect incidents in the future? So while it's, I appreciate the particular change you have made in, in procedure, I, I do urge you to consider more far-reaching ones to make sure that something, I mean, you've sort of fixed this one problem, but there's concern in the community, well, are there others that could crop up? Now, of course, you can't prevent everything, I understand that, and, you know, having the power go off is pretty dramatic, and the hospital's first priority, of course, is to deal with its patients. And I, and as you've heard, other members of the council have used the hospital rather regularly and appreciated its presence in the community. But I would like to encourage you to, at some point, report back to us some additional steps you have taken to assure that there will not be other spills, accidents, dumpings, similar sorts of stuff into the creek or, or into the area in general.
Well, Councilmember Snipper, one incident is too many, and I agree completely, and we're always, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Teague here. He's been at the hospital for nearly five years as vice president of operations and does a really good job, but, you know, sometimes we, we need to continuously reevaluate our processes and our procedures and, and, you know, to do the best we can, and you can count on that happening.
The second issue that concerns the community, of course, is if the hospital moves, there's going to be a rather lengthy process. You have to build a new hospital that has to be completed, ready to go, you know, when the doors open there is when you can, you know, start closing the doors here. That's a many-year process. I believe at one point I heard it could take five years from, from start to finish. But anyway, a lengthy, a lengthy period. So there's concern during that period, when the focus of the hospital will be on its new site, you know, we're worried about lapses on this site. And then after the hospital leaves, of course, will there be efforts to make sure that nothing, no storage tanks full of dangerous chemicals remain on the property, you know, that sort of thing as, as well? And I hope that you will share with us plans as you go forward. I don't expect you to have them in your hip pocket today, but that you will develop such plans and, and share them with us.
Well, Councilmember Snipper, if I could make one quick comment on that, you know, Tacoma Park and the campus, they're still very much part of our future, you know, with the, the village concept that we've talked about now for a number of years with urgent care, primary care, and a whole series of other key, important community activities happening there. We, we will make sure that campus continues to be a safe, welcoming place, because we plan on having that property another hundred years, serving the community. In fact, in particular, in a couple of weeks from now, we're going to be doing a walkabout on the campus with Bruce Sidwell. We reached out to him a number of times, and we're going to take a hike around the campus together and start talking about, one of the things that we've been talking about quite often is the stormwater management issues on that campus. And in particular, as we move the plans forward, what can we do, as Ms. Ettnor described in terms of rain gardens and other types of things, to mitigate some of the, the stormwater issues that have really been present there since nineteen-oh-seven, when the facility was built? And so it's a great opportunity for us to work collaboratively together with the city and with the community to figure out what can we do to, you know, we sort of have a clean slate. We're going to have terrific services there, let's all figure out as well to have a terrific environment. And so any of those potentially buried fuel tanks, you can bet that they'll be taken care of in the appropriate way for the future. But I look forward to coming back and giving more details on that.
Councilmember Clay.
Hi. Haven't seen you for a while.
Been a while.
Thanks for coming by.
You're welcome.
Have you seen these pictures?
I have.
Fascinating. Here's one, Outfall Sinkhole in the Making, photo taken February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. I think, I'm just, I'm concerned, kind of like Councilmember Snipper is, I haven't, I haven't walked by the site or up, up through it since the winter started, because it's been a cold winter for me, and I don't like the cold. This is a fairly disconcerting picture. I'm glad to hear that you're going to take a walk with Bruce Sidwell and look at the site, but it, I mean, it seems like what's needed is a bigger commitment to address some of these issues. The hospital sits on a really special site in Tacoma Park, and you've got, I think you've got sixteen acres there, and maybe three or four of them actually run in the area that goes right between the
Sounds about right, yeah.
The creek and where your, the hospital property pavement and all that kind of stuff starts. So you've got a fair chunk of area that's kind of woodsy and coming down the hill, and then you've got this kind of really high impact, lots of impermeable surface activity going on that has a pretty significant impact on the creek. And so that makes you kind of unique, because you're kind of a big player along the pathway, and you have a lot of impermeable surface relative to, say, a homeowner that's along the creek where maybe, you know, twenty-five percent of their property is, is impermeable surface and kind of different sort of an impact. So I think the hospital has a special responsibility to deal with these kinds of issues, and so I guess I would like to know how the, how the hospital is going to go about addressing some of these things, because this is clearly a, a problem, and, and I know that there's a problem that occurs on the, I know you're not, you're linked, but not in the same way, but there's a problem that continues on the Washington Adventist University property, which is their spring that they don't sort of deal with on, on site and runs down Carroll Avenue in one direction to, towards Garland, and in the other direction ends up, so I think what this may be mudslide is here going across the creek. And so it'd be nice to hear how, how is the hospital going to look at addressing these issues in the long term? Is there a way that when they do that, they could also have sort of a backup, so that if you do have another kind of a, of a diesel spill or something like that, there is some kind of a buffer, so that it doesn't go straight down the hill and straight into the creek? And then also, you know, could, could you take a lead maybe in working with Washington Adventist University to resolve sort of the broader impact issues of those, those two campuses that they have on Sligo Creek, because they're kind of, you know, their water is also going kind of right past you? And I appreciate, you know, fixing the sinkhole and those kinds of things, but clearly you need a bigger activity.
Yes. Councilmember Clay, you're absolutely correct. It needs a big solution. This isn't like something that a, to use healthcare vernacular, a Band-Aid's going to fix. Band-Aid will not fix this. And I, I would agree wholeheartedly, though we need to do what we can to make sure we keep the hillside, you know, on the day-to-day basis clean and as free as possible from debris and anything else of that nature. But we are beginning that process now. We want to really start pushing forward the agenda on how do we create a comprehensive stormwater management solution that not only includes the Washington Adventist Hospital campus, but also the university's campus as well? Because you can't look at them as, as separate, unique properties. They really do completely interact with each other.
They work together.
And so you can't do one without the other. So we are working very closely with them now about how do we move forward on the planning process? We want to include the community in that as well, and we think friends of Sligo Creek is a, is a great start for that, to, to have representatives from them, from that group as part of this process every step of the way. And so we're just, we're just now kind of ramping up. Of course, we've known and all of us together collectively for decades, you know, of the issues here, but I think it's an opportunity for us now to really address this with a complete, comprehensive solution once and for all together.
How will we hear more about that?
I think what we ought to do is, is invite me back, and we can talk more about it. It's just, we, we want to start this process, form a team, form a group that would consist of the community, start really working through what are the, what are the various processes we need to go through? And that may consist of some sort of a modified charrette as well, to talk about possibilities of what we can do to be creative. How do we collectively work on finding funding sources, you know, either through the, the hospital and the university, as well as maybe there's some grants out there as well, that we can do extra special things that, you know, certainly want to do the minimum, but can we do more than the minimum? As a community, can we, can we go a couple of steps beyond what the base minimum requirements might be from stormwater management? And be an example for others in the region of how we can do something here that's really unique and, and special.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stocks, for coming tonight. I'm disappointed that you have to be here, we have the circumstances, but I really appreciate your taking time out of your busy schedule to come down here. And I also appreciate you bringing the operational chief with you. I think it's important that he's here, because I think that we're talking about operational problems. I, again, the stormwater management thing, I hear you say we're going to, you know, start on that, and that's good, obviously, as we look forward, but I think the, you know, when I heard about this spill, it was like, oh, not again, kind of feeling. And I think that's unfortunate that the hospital's in that position where that's the reaction from the community, is here we go again. And I would like to suggest, and maybe you have it, but it doesn't appear that you do, that, that operationally you develop a, a risk mitigation plan for pollution of the, of the stream. And, you know, the stormwater plan is important, and that's one factor of it, but there are several different types of pollution that you might be able to anticipate reaching the stream valley, and I think it would be helpful in a, in a proactive way to develop a, a plan that looks at what are the, what are the likely potential pollution sources, and how can you mitigate those risks? And I use, for example, you have the, the diesel fuel. I know at our public works facility, we have a place where we collect oil and antifreeze. And in addition to having a container to put that in, we also have a wall around it so that if, there is a spill, that it's contained. And that's the type of step that I think could serve the hospital and the, the community and the stream valley well, is if you look at, you know, what are the potential risks and what's, what reasonable measures could be taken to mitigate, you know, any problems going forward? I make that as a suggestion. I'd like to make it as a requirement, you bring a, a plan back to us, but I guess at this point, we don't operate that way, so I'd like to strongly suggest that you do something like that.
Councilmember Seaman, thank, thank you for the
If I may, just one other thing as part of that would be, I think some of the, the things we've heard about in the past have been maybe a training issue, that staff might, you know, your operational staff might benefit from a, embracing a thorough understanding of the importance of pollution not reaching the stream valley. Thank you. Go ahead.
I appreciate your thoughts on that, and I will certainly consult with Mr. Teague on, on ways that we can provide more risk management around those issues, certainly. Thanks for those suggestions.
Councilmember Snipper has one more question.
Yeah. I appreciate your answers, but I guess I was looking for something a little more specific. So I would like to request that you come back before us in, say, sixty days, sometime period, and give us an update on where you are. I'm not asking for, you know, finalized plans in any fixed time period, but just essentially a status update. Here's where we are after two months, you know, that kind of thing. Just, just so that people are assured that, that you're moving forward, you know, that it's not just, you know, filed away and sits, sits on a shelf or whatever.
You bet. Be happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening, and, and happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. City Managers' comments.
Just had a few other items. I just wanted to note for the record that as we previously requested by the council, there is a report in the agenda packet giving you an update on the use of the auditorium since it opened. That was something the council had requested some time ago. Also wanted just to share with the council that the Board of Elections has identified a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant opportunity from the U.S. Election Assistance Commission. If approved, the funds would be used to develop and document best practices for coordinating pre- and post-election audits. The city will be submitting an application in conjunction with the Voting Systems Institute, which is a nonprofit corporation comprised of the original team that we had worked with, with the Skin Integrity System. And Jesse is working with both the Board of Elections and with the Voting Systems Institute in preparing the application. If approved, the program funding would begin May first of two thousand and eleven. I know one of the concerns the council always has when we apply for grants is, is there any cost impact to the city? And in discussing that with Jesse, at a minimum, it would be cost-neutral and may actually be financially beneficial to the city, because it may cover some of Jesse's costs during those weeks that she spends so much time on election work. Then the other item I just wanted to, to note and maybe get some direction from the council is, the mayor had signed off on a legal services request form to have the city attorney do the requested legal work relative to the speed camera law. She is scheduled to complete that by this Friday to go out in the agenda packet. I'm not, it wasn't clear from the discussion if the council wishes for her to complete that work, or if the mayor or I should tell her to, to stop at whatever point she's at at this juncture.
I would say go ahead if it's that close to being finished.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are in the process, but I assume that it's already underway and should be done by Friday.
She completed the first five minutes, now she has to do the second five minutes? Is that what you're saying?
I would, I would
I would finish it.
I would feel more comfortable depending on her for legal advice than
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm not a lawyer.
Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Legislative update.
We did have a request for public comment.
I appreciate it, but we've talked about this a good long time. We're going to have a briefing when we come back to. We're running way behind.
We are.
And I'd like to just keep going. Sorry.
Good evening. I'd like to go over the update on the legislative session. There's a couple of things. I've certainly sent you a bunch of emails. I appreciate your
a couple of things. I've certainly sent you a bunch of emails. I appreciate your responses. Just so that those who may be watching have a sense, some of the major issues that are going on right now are how to, how to spend or not spend the transportation fund in the state legislature. And this is a major topic of conversation within almost every committee in any discussion where funding seems to be an issue in the General Assembly. The kinds of issues that are being talked about are concerned that the governor is proposing diverting some funds from the transportation fund to the general fund to help get through this budget year. There's others who, you know, so there are some people who really want to just very strictly limit transportation funds for transportation. Others want to use it for as many purposes as possible because it's there. We're watching it very carefully, primarily because the highway user revenue funds are very critical for us, and we want to make sure that those things come through and that, and I think that MML and a number of entities are watching that very closely. A side note, in looking at the legislation, is that a number of people are trying to kind of jump on this as ways to tweak elements of the purple line. It's something that I do have some concern about. I think some people have some concern that, you know, maybe they can put a bill in and get the route changed a little bit the way they want or something like that. And so there's some little things like that that we're watching. On the other hand, there's some, there's a proposal to create a special authority to run the purple line and the Baltimore red line. I have no idea if those are good things or bad things. I've asked Michelle Douglas to follow those, but they may have some impact on us. And I just want to let you know that those are the kinds of things that are being talked about. Obviously, there's lots of budget discussions. We're following that very carefully. There are a number of proposals to kind of alter sales tax and amusement taxes, and we're looking at those carefully to see if they affect us. There are the standard immigration issues that have come up, including a lot, a bill that would prohibit sanctuary laws, those kinds of things pop up. Not as many it seems this year as in past years. I think the budget has kind of taken a larger role. Nevertheless, where we have some standard information or position, that's the kind of thing that we can share with entities if it looks like something has some legs. There's always proposals on economic development issues, but not as much this year as it seems in past years. And as you're aware, there is the bill related to, I guess spurred by Pepco, holding utilities accountable. The public hearings on that are in March. And I know that there's been some interest by several of you of a resolution on that topic. And if there's direction, I can prepare a resolution for an upcoming council meeting. There's, is there a sense of, or do you want to just get back to me later if that's what you would like to do?
This is a resolution?
Resolution on, kind of on the, on the governor's bill that's to hold Pepco accountable for providing service and getting penalties if adequate service isn't provided.
It sounds very general. I'd prefer to see something more specific as regards municipalities, in particular their abilities to buy their own streetlights.
Well, and there are, and there are some of those bills as well. And so I'll...
Those are the ones I'd be more interested in.
There are a number of bills that it sounds like it might be good to, if you can get us additional information, and there might be one or a group of them that we might want to comment on after we understand a little bit more the particular ones.
Okay. Do you want to tell me now or you want to just send me an email later about which issues you're most concerned about?
As regards Pepco or as regards?
I'm just a little confused. I'm sorry.
I was talking specifically about Pepco.
About Pepco. The, there is a primary one that the governor put forward, kind of in conjunction with the leadership in both the House and Senate. That's, that's the, that's the big one. I'm happy to look and see. There's also bills for purchasing streetlights or other kinds of energy-related bills.
Are there competing bills around, because the governor's bill is mainly focused on holding Pepco accountable. Are there competing bills around that topic area?
I have not seen that. I have seen the governor's bill is the big one.
At least from my perspective, I agree that if there's other bills about buying streetlights, I'm in favor of those. But if there's not another competing bill around the accountability issue, I would, I would support the governor's bill. It would be also interesting to see what that, what the ramifications of accountability mean, how, if there's any thought in Annapolis about how that might play out, whether it regards, whether it includes the Public Service Commission or other analysis of how Pepco operates or...
The bills...
But how it applies to us and what we can specifically do is where I'd like to see us spend energy.
I'll see if there's a municipal angle to that.
I mean, the main function of the bill, I think, is to have it set up where if Pepco doesn't deliver, based on some set of standards around repair, then the residents, the people who are paying customers, actually get paid back. They, Pepco, a fine gets levied on Pepco, and then they're forced to pay that fine back to the paying customers. That's my understanding of the structure.
Yes.
I think it would just be good to have a little bit more understanding of how things are proceeding so that if we're going to weigh in, we can do so in a way that's helpful rather than just a me-too.
Okay. I'll look for it.
I'd like to see a Pepco bill that just takes away their monopoly. I mean, I don't understand why we continue to let them have a monopoly and extract money out of the pockets of Maryland residents and give them to their investors when they're not meeting the minimum obligations that I think are required of an entity that gets a monopoly and access to all of our public right ways. I don't, I don't see why we have to even kind of wait around to do that. So if someone proposes that, I'd like to support that.
I'll let you know. As to the items that are in the bill status table that I've provided you, as the mayor said, the alcoholic, the Tacoma Park alcoholic beverages legislation's been approved at the local level. It then goes to the full General Assembly. The, as I mentioned before, MC 1111, which was the permitting for school buildings and restricting it to Montgomery County for permitting, is being held while Rockville and the School District work out an agreement. Later on, we'll have a reconsideration of the resolution on the election nearing boundaries, and we may have someone here to testify about that. The MC 2011, which is the solicitation of money or donations from occupants of vehicles, I did send in an email and information that the city council will be considering, considering its own legislation about aggressive panhandling coming up in a couple of weeks, and that that's something that may wish to consider. When it comes to stormwater charges, there's a couple of different bills. And there's, there is a resolution before you this evening, but I just want to mention that both MC 2111, which is a bill that would have Montgomery County property be subject to local stormwater fees, that's one bill. But there's also a state bill that would have the state government be, have to pay local stormwater fees as well. And, let's see. The other items, I think, we'll be addressing with the resolutions that are before you later in the evening. And if there's any other questions, let me know. I appreciate your emails during the week for things that I need to keep on top of.
Thank you.
And if I can just add a couple items, I sent everybody an email today that cc'ing my request to Majority Leader Barve about submitting a bill to address the concern that this council had as one of its legislative action requests to MML about the exemption for banks from the personal property tax. And that, there was some interest about that at MML, but it did not make the cut as the priorities for this year. But as we've been moving through the session, there was renewed interest at MML on that. It was supposed to be brought up last Saturday at our legislative, at our legislative committee, but somehow didn't get on the agenda. And so Delegate Barve had said that he would sponsor that bill, and they needed an elected official to make that request. And so I did that to get our, our request back on the table. So there is renewed interest in that from the league and from other municipalities.
This would be a statewide?
This is, this is a state bill going in by the Majority Leader. And there are a number of bills being put forward by Senator Young from Frederick County to cordon off various pieces of monies for replenishing the municipality's highway user revenues, including a proposal to put, raise taxes on two bridges in one tunnel with the money from that specifically designated toward municipal highway user revenues, and then whatever's left after that back over to the state transportation fund. So there, there are three or four different iterations of trying to do something to protect what got taken away from us if we, if we're going to get it back. And the, the sense is that the next three weeks is crucial and that everybody in the legislature is very aware of highway user revenues where last year they weren't aware of them at all. So people are a little more optimistic than previously that something in that might be returned, and there may be a particular bill or two that starts to get legs on that front that we should follow. And we may want to be ready to come on board with some resolutions sometime in the next couple of weeks. And I wanted to make sure that I was clear on the election boundaries resolution. My sense was that maybe we were going to have somebody here to explain that tonight. Was that delay or were we going to have that or?
I told the gentleman that, that the resolutions were coming up around nine, so he may still be coming. I don't know.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good. Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you. I had a quick conversation, not a quick conversation. I had a conversation with Al Carr, make a quick comment, about the bag bill. And he was pretty optimistic about it. He thought it was, because of the now extensive experience in DC, he thought that there were a number of other, a number of folks who were going to support it who hadn't supported it in the past, and he thought the possibility of passage were, were pretty good. And that's pretty good news because I know the city has been interested in doing it ourselves, but it would be much better if we get the whole state to do it.
And did we do a resolution supporting that this year? Or we did one?
We did one last year or the year before. I think several years in a row, actually.
Right. So we may, depending on how things are going, we may want to weigh in again? Do we need another resolution or do we just say, as we said?
I don't think we need, I don't think we need another resolution.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Wright.
I just wanted to go back to the panhandling bill. I know we're discussing that in a few weeks, but it strikes me as though we might want to try and influence this bill because if it's a situation where they, they do something that we don't like, and then we have to have our own law, and then it's different from what's being enforced in the rest of the county, it's going to be one of those, an odd situation where people don't really, most people don't really know particularly a panhandler which, where they are and what the rule is. So I would suggest us trying to understand and figure out the bill that's being proposed and influenced so it mirrors what we would like.
Yeah, I would agree as second, Councilmember Wright's opinion on that.
Anything else on legislative update?
Not right now.
Okay. And we don't have any minutes to adapt, and we don't have a consent agenda, so we will move to item 1A, which is a resolution authorizing settlement or release of Deshane versus City of Tacoma Park. Does City Manager want to say anything about that?
This was just a recommendation from the city attorney's office, which had been previously approved by the council in closed session to settle a claim. The facts are in dispute, but the amount to actually litigate the claim would be much more than the proposed settlement amount.
Okay. Thanks. That's been moved in second. I don't see any council comment. Is there any public comment? I don't see any public comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Then we have the single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of six replacement police mobile computers.
Would you like to move it?
Second.
And Councilmember Wright, do you have a proposal on amendment?
My proposal is that the resolution be adjusted to pay for this out of the speed camera fund as opposed to the general fund. My interpretation would be that this would be something that's of a public safety nature. And would make sense based on the tight budget and the available speed camera funds.
Okay. And I'm assuming this is the proposed amendment language that the clerk or the city manager has provided? So is this a, you want to propose the amendment as a friendly amendment?
I propose it as a friendly amendment, yes.
Second.
Okay. So the proposal that's now on the floor is this revised ordinance. Comments on the ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? Yes. Mr. Lovelace?
Yeah. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Napole Avenue, Your Peace Delegate. I think we should do everything we can to support our police and helping with their computers and stuff. It'd be a hell of a good way to show, show the appreciation for what we've, what they've done for us in the last several weeks with that robbery and with the other crimes on the street and stuff. And I think we, if we can make it easier for the policemen to do their work, and it will trickle down to the cop on the beat, and it will also trickle down to us to make it safer for our community. If we can do that, I think we should support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, this is a single reading ordinance. For the clerk, please call her.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay. And then we move to a first reading ordinance, meaning the Tacoma Park Code to provide for adoption of administrative regulations for use of public space and public buildings. City manager like to talk about this.
The council is being asked to consider this evening an ordinance that would have an impact on what is currently titled Morals and Conduct, Chapter 14.20 of Title 14, Health and Safety of the City's Code. There are two sections to the proposed amendment. The first section, which would go into effect immediately upon adoption at the second reading, would change the title from Morals and Conduct to Public Space and Public Buildings, and would allow the city manager to establish administrative regulations for the use of public facilities owned and operated by the City of Tacoma Park. The second section, which would not go into effect until after the administrative regulations were adopted, would effectively delete all of the items in Article III, which address the use and basically the use and the issue of permits or reservations for those public spaces. What we have done in an effort to give you a sense of what the administrative regulations would look like is attach a preliminary draft, which applies to the various meeting rooms, community centers, gymnasium, et cetera. They're available to the public for use. This would be expanded to include the city's parks, the parking, or the picnic shelters, et cetera, prior to their final adoption.
So if you can just say again, if we adopt this, if we pass first reading this evening, what this would do... what this would do, you were talking about the two different things and it sounded like it would just be to change?
The first section would go into effect immediately upon adoption at the second reading.
Okay.
And that would be to change the title of the section and then to allow the city manager to establish administrative regulations. The second section would not be deleted until after those administrative regulations had gone through the process. So never at any point in time would you be without rules and regulations for the use of the city's facilities.
So the rule, if we adopt this, this wouldn't change the rules until the administrative regulations have been adopted, which is a process that we've discussed numerous times about how that happens?
Correct.
So that passing this ordinance wouldn't change those rules. And just as a further clarification, just because we've talked about this process numerous times, if we do this, is this taking the kind of the process of understanding whatever those rules and regulations, fees, whatever, what those are? I know it would eventually put them in administrative regulations, but it would just be good to hear how that would or would not kind of remove it from possible council interest or community interest in those.
If you'd like, I can walk you through the process for the adoption of administrative regulations. Would that be helpful?
No.
No.
No. All I want to do is see if my memory is correct on administrative regulations, that there is a public process for adopting administrative regulations.
Correct.
What we're essentially doing is saying, okay, if somebody wants to change something by five cents, we don't, the city council doesn't have to change city code, but they can be done administratively. But when the administrative regulations are drafted and proposed, they then go out for public comment for 30 days, 45 days, some period of time? And once they go out, the council can say, gee, we would like to discuss those, talk about those, whatever, and the public can comment on them as well.
Correct.
So it's not taking it out of the realm of, you know, council consideration or public consideration, but it simplifies the process.
Correct. As a public notification of the administrative regulations, there's an opportunity for the public to comment as well as the city council to comment before they're finalized.
Okay. And I was hoping I would, by doing that, not have a bank of lights in front of me, but I got the bank of lights in front of me. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the operative word that I heard you say is that there's an opportunity for public comment and there's an opportunity for council comment, but with who does the final decision rest?
I believe that rests with the city manager after taking into consideration all of the public comments and the direction from the city council.
So ultimately, the council.
Not ultimately, the council. Because?
Yes, ultimately, the council.
Okay.
Because we direct the city manager. If she's going with some regulations that we don't like, we can say we want to talk about them and?
I submitted in June a report on housing rents, or houses, residential properties in Tacoma Park that are not owned or occupied. I have not gotten an answer back. It's been over six months. And so I would submit that being on the council does not have some special privilege to where our opinions are going to be satisfying the community.
I'll just say again, ultimately, the council can decide. This takes it out of the code. Councilmember Snipper?
Well, I too am interested in the report on the rental properties, so I hope that that will rise up in the priority list. We haven't heard, as near as I recall, anything about any status report or whatever on that request, like what you've been doing, what you, when we're going to see something.
The pile's quite long and we've gone through and eliminated all of the duplications. The challenge we have right now is that there, frankly, I just don't have staff time to go through the next section because it involves going out and doing fieldwork and looking at each of the properties to see what their status is. So there are some properties, for example, that are included on the listing, if I recall correctly, that do not have an address. So we have to go out and identify them by parcel and then go and investigate that. So a lot of it's just basically not having the staff to take the time to do that, given the current workloads for just the routine responsibilities that they've been assigned. So we've gone through the initial?
Yeah, that would have been nice to hear a couple of months ago. I mean, I would have appreciated hearing that that was the plan you were doing, that you were going to first go through and eliminate the duplications and that then you were going to, I mean, it would have been nice to hear something about it, is I guess is my point. I'm not trying to second guess what you decided to do, just it would have been nice to hear about it here at the council. It's a way of raising revenue, after all. I mean, these folks, anyway, you get the point.
City manager Matthews?
Sure. I have the language in the code regarding the comment period for administrative regulations. I think if I read it, it'll clarify the council's role.
Thanks.
Comment period. Following notice of a proposed regulation, there shall be a minimum period of 21 days for comment on the proposed regulation. Council members may comment on any proposed regulation during the comment period provided in the public notice. At any time before the expiration of the comment period established by the notice, the council may elect to hold a public hearing on a proposed regulation. The hearing shall be held within 30 days of the end of the comment period unless the comment period ends while the council is in recess, in which case, I'll skip that part. If the council schedules a public hearing, the public comment period is extended until the date of the public hearing. Based on information from the public hearing or other public or council comments, the council may direct the agency to withdraw or modify the proposed regulation.
Thank you. The council has the ultimate say. Councilmember Wright?
And then what's the rule for if a regulation, you want to adjust a regulation? How does that, can the council has to have a regulation reexamined or is that the change to a regulation at the discretion of the city manager or can the council?
The council, later in the same ordinance, the council may by resolution repeal any final or emergency regulation. And the council may by resolution instruct the city manager to modify the final regulation as the council deems necessary.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
On getting down to the wording in the draft, administrative regulations, which is a seven-page draft, and in the first page, paragraph entitled priority programming comes up with highest, second priority and third priority. It says examples of activities of highest priority include but are not limited to city council meetings, public hearings, council-appointed board and commission meetings, and, and this is the part that I'm interested in, city meetings of broad community interest and impact. Kind of sounds like a catch-all and I'm wondering if in fact you have a better idea of, a more specific idea of what that means, because I have a question in that area.
An example would be if you were to have a community meeting to discuss PEPCO or WSSC, types of act, or types of meetings that the council would like to host that have an impact on the community at large. And those would be two easy examples or two relevant examples.
In the case of the rec center, which is included as one of the three facilities, that rec center gets used in Ward Six by various constituent groups. Some of the neighborhood associations use it quite regularly and those are meetings called by those associations. And of course, there's also meetings that are called by city staff. Those obviously would be city meetings and public meetings, but would a community association meeting held, say, in the rec center or perhaps even in the Hefner Center, if an association wanted to do that, would that qualify as a highest priority or would the association be expected to fall into the category where it might have to cough up some dollars? I'm not saying what the answer should be, I'm just curious what your thinking is.
That, a neighborhood association, for example, would fall into the third category and we should probably change the name of that because if I understand correctly, the way the council has it scheduled for fees right now, organizations like Hillwood Manor Neighborhood Association have an opportunity to use this space X number of times per year at no cost.
And X equals 11?
11, thank you. Which, when I was waiting for this item to come up, is not addressed specifically in the fee schedule and that's why this is basically a draft. There are things that will be worked out as we continue to look at it.
Okay, well, I just want you to pay attention to that. I think under the fee schedule, that comes up later on the attachment A, it indicates, say, the rec center meeting room, the back one, which is the one that usually gets used as, I guess, $15 per hour if it's a Montgomery County resident, that would be the applicable?
That would, one of the neighborhood associations in your ward would not have to pay a rental fee for the first 11 times they decided to use one of the spaces.
Oh, all right. Well, then that would be, okay, then that you've?
And that's, that's the one that I noticed is missing on this, on this draft.
Thank you. That's the only question I have right now.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, one of the biggest concerns that I hear in the community is a lack of appreciation of community in our government. The community feel of the government has changed significantly over recent years and that it become, our government seems to be more of a business or more of a bureaucracy. And that's why I'm concerned about this. I think it's, it is moving things, decisions and the regulations more firmly into the government and less in the community. I would feel much more comfortable with delegating these responsibilities to the recreation committee as opposed to the city government itself. Establishment of fees and the regulations for the use of the facilities. I think the, we have a recreation committee that we turn to for guidance, but I think this to a very large extent involves the community lessen these decisions. And that's why I would like to see us have a work session where we can discuss these and see if, you know, which, which powers that we put into the hands of the city administration and which powers we put in the hands of our, of our appointed committee.
Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you, Mayor. I too wondered about the use of the rec committee. I think there's a lot of possibility here, as Terry outlined, for contributions from the rec committee on the details of, I mean, this is quite general and, but, you know, there's a lot of definitional issues and so on that I think the rec committee could provide a lot of useful input. So I too would like to see some modification of this to incorporate the rec committee process in some sense and hope we can do this as a work session instead of trying to hold on it first and second reading tonight.
First reading tonight.
First reading tonight, Terry. I have a couple of specific concerns. Brett got the first one. On page two of the draft, the under reservation process, I think in general, the reservation process is pretty good, but I was a little concerned about the restriction on how far in advance in the second paragraph there. It says, may not be reserved more than three months in advance. I can easily imagine that someone who wants to schedule a series of events might want to be able to put out a calendar with all the dates in it. And that not being able to reserve it seems a little restrictive. What, perhaps what you mean is reserve as it's defined in here, which means you have to pay all the fees and so on, this may be one of those definitional issues. Is there a way to hold the dates or some similar kind of thing? And if there isn't, I urge you to consider a, three months might be the appropriate time period, but a way to allow groups to schedule particularly series, a year in advance and then have to pay the reservation and then, and then it's fixed. Some way to deal with that issue?
We can bring that back. Just as clarification, right now, the rec department does not book space more than three months out so that it can have sufficient facilities to do its recreation program. So recreation programming, for example, gets a higher priority because of the services that they provide and the programming that they provide over other uses that they want to book out for a year, because it would have an impact on whether or not they could provide summer camp programs, for example, or other programs that would be occupied up in the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue or in other, in one of the other meeting rooms, other spaces. So that's something that's going on right now as far as not being able to book out more than three months in advance.
Doesn't the rec department put out a calendar that's quite a bit longer than three months in advance?
I don't think so.
No? You don't?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, that's a surprise all by itself.
And if you're an entity that wants to rent something, you can't rent until you're almost like two weeks prior to the start of a new quarter.
Right, exactly.
And if you want to rent at Hefner Park, they've been told that they cannot rent that facility unless they're a pain group.
Except that was a mistake and that was acknowledged.
When was that acknowledged?
Today.
Today. And I asked the question in November.
Another question I had was on page three, at the bottom, termination or revocation of reservation. The city reserves the right to terminate or amend a reservation at any time. That sounds perfectly reasonable to me, though without written notice is a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. Would there be some way to specify some kind of notice?
This would be invoked, if you will, most probably when there was an actual event taking place. So say someone, for example, had rented the Azelli Room and the activities that were going on within the room were blatantly in violation of all of the city rules, dangerous to the participants or dangerous to others in the facility or damaging to the facility. They reserve the right to cancel the reservation, remove? They reserve the right to cancel the reservation, remove them from the facility, and prohibit them from using the facility again for a defined period.
Okay, so the intent of this is if they are violating some agreement, as you just outlined, if that is, they agree to abide by, there's a whole long list of rules, general responsibilities and so on, like the sale, like you just indicated, alcoholic beverages or something like that. But it isn't, it's not restricted to that. It sounds like it could be used just because, you know, the city wanted to kick them out without any notice. So I wonder if you might consider either specifying when you would do it without written notice, that is, when they're violating some rule or law, and then have a second provision in which you talked about at least some kind of notice. These are regulations, so you're given a little more leeway to indicate that, you know, we're sorry, we can't give you 24 hours' notice, but we have, you know, in a meeting we're going to bump you from, and make some kind of effort to notify the folks. Do you see what I'm saying? Rather than have it sort of two classes of termination.
I think the preceding paragraph tends to address that somewhat, cancellation by city.
And there's another section that addresses...
Yeah, it's not quite...
...being moved into another room in case conflict. But I can include that when we go through and finalize the administrative regulations.
Yeah, think about how you might, yeah. On page six, general responsibilities of the user. This is a pretty comprehensive list. I had a couple of thoughts. There is no mention of gambling.
That could be added.
And I guess I did assume that gambling was one of the prohibited activities.
Is bingo gambling?
Yeah, and that was, thank you, Brett, that was where I was going.
Sorry.
What's gambling?
I apologize.
Does it include bingo? So think about how you might want to do that. I'm sure somewhere somebody's got, you know, language that had to do it. And then another one, another question I had, sort of three quarters of the way down, there's a bullet that begins, "Posters, decorations, and directional signage are removed. No nails, tacks, screws, glue, or similar means of securing any material." You know, there are a lot of modern methods of securing things, and I wonder if you might want to, you know, you can now buy Post-it glue, for example, just as a glue stick. It's very cool stuff. So you can put up posters with essentially glue stick on the back. And would that be prohibited under here or not? I think if you have some language that indicated the point of this section was if the attachment method would cause damage, then it was prohibited. But if it wasn't going to cause damage, then, you know, it was probably kosher.
I can bring that to the rec department.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I agree that the rec committee ought to be consulted before we vote on this.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Just as pointed clarification, this is the initial draft. It was finalized on Friday afternoon, and the intent is to forward this to the recreation committee as well as the Arts and Humanities Commission and others that are frequent users of the space. So this is a first draft. It's not complete. There are things in here that are still being discovered and revised.
I'm just not comfortable giving the authority to the city manager for that, before you go to the rec committee and the Arts and Humanities Committee.
Councilmember Ray.
I just want to remind us that we're voting on whether we want to give the regulatory authority to the city manager, which allows us still to basically write the regulation however we want at the end of the comment period, as I understood the city clerks. I mean, we have to agree on it as the seven of us, but we could adjust it in any way we see fit. And I don't think we should spend a lot of time going over this draft administration, administrative regulation, any of its content really, because I imagine it's going to change. And we're going to have at least a 21-day public comment period, and then opportunity for the council to wordsmith probably a lot. So that would just be my advice, that we either decide we're going to change this from a code issue to a regulatory issue. Unless you want to put one of those things into the ordinance that we're voting on, it doesn't, it's not germane to the discussion.
Councilmember Clay.
It sounds like we should table this until we have more time to discuss it. We have council members who have significant concerns. So my question is, what's our timeline? Can we not book things until we get this in place? Do we have an interim? We're renting things now, right? We have an interim process for...
Right now, we are renting the auditorium space and using it in accordance with the information that was provided to you back in July when we talked about how the auditorium might be used.
Right.
That does not change, excuse me, all the other spaces are currently being rented, used, programmed, as they always have been.
Well, it's clear to me that there are several council members who would like to chew this over some more, I think, before we vote on it. Is that, is that right?
If yours was a motion to table, I would second it.
We can't table it if it's not on the table. I didn't hear it moved.
That's a good plan.
All right, then I'm not moving it.
I move it. I'll second it.
All right, I move the table.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion to table. That takes precedent. All those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's have hands. I see four hands. It's tabled. And tabling is to, I'm trying to remember, is tabling to a time certain or open-ended?
No, I think we should do a time certain. I think we should deal with it right away. I just think that people want to choose, they want you on a little bit more.
You want to make it table to a time certain?
Two weeks.
Pick a time?
Is that enough time, Terry?
I think it's important for the rec committee to also be involved in the discussions.
30 days?
Seems like, you know, 30 days would be good.
All right, four weeks.
Could I have a request? Did the city clerk send around the actual issue that we're voting on, which is the language she just read off earlier? Because the rec committee being involved or not being involved has nothing to do with whether it's a city code or a regulation.
Okay. Can I just ask one question of clarification? If the code that you read requires the city council to review it, or if in fact the mayor may not put it on the agenda, and the regulation would become in effect, in force without a city council review?
City council can vote to put anything on the agenda anytime they want to, us four out of seven people.
When's the last time we did that?
Doesn't matter when the last time is.
The question is whether it requires the city council to review.
It does refer to the council may.
May.
So it would require...
If there's a dissent on the council? I have a good answer.
Before we do anything else, I'd like to make sure that the mayor explains exactly what we're doing. Because I'm a little less than served.
This item was originally not moved, but then it was moved and seconded. We tabled the motion, and the discussion after the successful vote to table was to attach a time certain to the tabling. That's 30 days. It will then come back onto the table after 30 days, or let's say 28 days. It'll come back on in 28 days. Has that, is that good? And then we will have had sufficient time to think about this, talk to people, potentially talk with whoever we want to, and we will then have this back in front of us to start the process that will take some period of time, if that's what we want to do, to update the use policies for city space.
27 days and 23 hours.
Well, 21 hours. Have we finished with that item?
Thank you.
May I ask a clarification? What would you like staff to do in the 27 or 28 days between now and then? Do you want us just to leave it to the council, or do you want us to continue to plug along on proposed administrative regulations? Or would you like us to just come back to you on whatever date the 28th day is?
I would suggest that you continue to work on the administrative regulations. We don't want to lose that time. And then that might provide some clarity for some people who had some questions tonight as to how this might work. And if the council wants to contact the recreation committee, and the recreation has, committee has questions and wants to work with staff, they can get that feedback back through the staff or to the council, depending on how they want to do it.
Depending on how the rec committee wants to do it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're finished with this item for this evening. We will take a short break and come back for resolution for, on state legislation items, and a work session discussion of large grant requests.
I just wanted to clarify something that I said during the last discussion. I had asked about whether or not it was mandatory for the city council to review the regulations. And city clerk said that no, it was a situation where we may review them, but it is optional. And so I said, well, that would mean that the mayor would have to schedule it on the agenda, and I in no way meant to disparage our mayor. I was thinking that it was, I wasn't at all thinking that it would be a willful refusal to put it on the agenda. I was thinking in terms of if it was, something that was public, public notice that the regulation was, was put in effect and was open for public comment, that this council may not see that come forward, and so that the council may never review those and pass judgment on it. So I apologize to Mayor if anyone misinterpreted that, what I meant. I certainly know that Mayor Williams has been very cooperative, at least with me, and I assume with the other council members, on putting things on the agenda whenever we ask him to. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's not always been the case. It has been with you, though.
We're at agenda item number three, state legislation. And we have one or two resolutions.
We have, we have one that you may wish to reconsider, and you have three new resolutions to consider this week.
Okay.
The gentleman who wanted to address you is not here, so I'm not sure what to do about reconsideration of resolution 2011-6 concerning MC 1911, which is electioneering boundaries. Basically, this is a resolution that you passed last week. It had concerns raised that Tacoma Park was objecting to it when it went before the county affairs committee in the state legislature in the Montgomery delegation. It was held. It is on their agenda again for next Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. to be considered.
Next Wednesday, meaning this week or next?
I'm sorry, this week, the 16th. And so you may wish to not take this up, or you may wish to rescind it, or you may wish to amend it. And I haven't gotten direction, I've heard some different options, but I've not been given direction as to what you would like to do with this.
Would anybody like to speak to this one? Councilmember Schultz.
I think that I'd like to suggest to my colleagues that we not take it up, that we leave our vote as we made it at the last, at the time we passed this resolution.
Does anybody disagree with that? Councilmember Clay.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I think that, I think 25 feet is too close unless they're willing to make a change so that at least one entrance to the polling place is provided that is harassment-free.
And I conveyed that sentiment to somebody down there, but I don't remember who.
Also, I think that the parking lot issue is not the real issue, and I think it was you, Councilmember Schultz, who said that if the parking lot issue was the actual issue, then they should come up with a solution that addresses the problem of people in the parking lot and not a solution that says, now we get to stand 25 feet from the poll entrance.
Yeah, that's what I had suggested, was the idea that keep the 100-foot distance as it is and issue waivers precinct by precinct where the parking or traffic issue or whatever it is, moving vehicles is a concern, and then that way it can be adjusted that way rather than changing the whole law.
If I might, there is, I don't have the full law in front of me, but there is some language that gives the, I believe it's the election judge, the chief judge, some discretion about where that line is based on the, you know, based on the configuration of the building and the features, the current one.
Is there any more color to what the, I think it was the ACLU or no?
I don't, I honestly don't know that any of these other entities took a strong position or took a position on this. I think this was something that really was raised by the Democratic Central Committee, and it didn't seem like it was, you know, I've not seen any real documentation that there were other parties to this.
So would it be fair to say that the message that we should send back to the county affairs subcommittee is that we stand by our resolution? We were hoping to have the opportunity to hear from somebody who could convince us otherwise. We didn't hear that, and that we felt that there was adequate flexibility in the existing law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well said.
We'll convey that. What's the next one?
Okay, we have, the next bill is a resolution supporting HB 121 and SV 168, which is the Lorraine Sheehan Health and Community Services Act of 2011. Basically, this act would increase alcohol taxes by 10 cents per drink, and the additional revenue from that 10 cents per drink would go to, be divided among several funds in the state government, one the Development Disability Support Fund, one the Addiction Treatment and Prevention Fund, one the Mental Health Care Fund, and one the Maryland Medicaid Trust Fund. The information that the proponents have provided about this bill is included in your package. There had been some support for a similar bill by this council last year, but not a resolution. And so the resolution's in front of you.
Councilmember Stevens.
I have a question. It says that the alcohol taxes will be increased by 10 cents per drink. Could you tell me a little more about how that, I mean, are... Could you tell me a little more about how that, I mean, are they, what do you do about a bottle of wine? You say it has...
Forty cents, because it's four glasses.
Well, that's my question. So they have some rule for converting different, you know, if it's a bottle of whiskey, is it? I mean, I don't know what the answer is.
My sense is that the state legislature, in its wisdom, will figure that out if they pass this bill.
Great, okay. Shut up then.
Right, I do, part of the background information talks about the current excess, for example, the current excise tax on beer is nine cents per gallon, so there's some kind of a measurement that's involved.
I think I remember hearing something about that this would really only apply to beer and wine, that there was somehow a separate, I'm just telling, I seem to recall hearing that there were like two separate, there are alcohol taxes and there's taxes on like, kind of the equivalent of casks of hard liquor, and then there are taxes on individual drinks of beer and wine, and that that's why this is aimed at that.
All right, fine, I'm just curious.
It's been moved by Councilmember Robinson, or seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any further discussion? Councilmember Wright?
All the measurement, all the rates are by per gallon, so I wonder if that 10 cents refers to gallons? And just to give you a sense, it's nine cents per gallon for beer, 40 cents per wine, and $1.50 per gallon for spirits. Beer and wine was last changed in 1972, and spirits were last changed in 1955. I was alive at one of those dates and not the other.
Well, I was alive at both, and I remember when they increased it, and man, I'm still angry about it.
You're the youngest person on the council, aren't you, Josh?
I'm not sure about that. Fred might have me beat.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this resolution? Any public comment? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one has it. The last one?
The next one.
Oh, there's more?
Yes.
I thought you said three.
There was the one to reconsider, and then there were three new ones.
Oh, sorry.
The next one, I'd like to defer to Councilmember Siemens. I've put in your place his revised draft of resolution supporting House Bill 127, South End, Senate Bill 262, related to the financial literacy curriculum. The draft resolution was passed out at your break, but it was also emailed to you over the weekend.
Thank you. I think there's a large feeling in the community that lack of financial literacy has helped to create some of the problems that we're experiencing with our current economy. The comptroller, Peter Francho, and Governor O'Malley have supported legislation that would require the teaching of financial literacy skills in high school, that one semester of financial literacy must be successfully completed before graduation. I think that it is very important, and I think it also is important that we support our leaders at the state level when they are behind and introduce important legislation, things that will be important to our community. So I encourage the council to pass a resolution supporting these two bills. And I'll also point out that Wednesday at 11:30 at Mr. Francho's office in Annapolis, he'll be holding a press conference prior to the House hearing.
The Senate hearings.
The Senate hearings Wednesday, thank you, on Wednesday afternoon at 1:00, and then Thursday is the House hearing at 1:00 also. So again, I encourage any community members, council members, community members, to attend the hearings, and you certainly are welcome at the press conference at Mr. Francho's office. And that came from me, not, from him, not from me.
And would you like to move the resolution?
Like to move the resolution?
Yeah. Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any further council comments? Any public comment?
I got one question about that. My name is Pat Lobos, 7620 Maple Avenue, your Pichet Delegate. I got one question on this. You said it should be mandatory upon graduation. I think that should also be mandatory on GED graduations. What do you people think of that? Have you got that in the language by any chance? Because a lot of people who drop out of school now go on to get their GED equivalency, and I think, you know, this should also be enforced on the GED tests also. What do you think?
It sounds like a good idea. I don't have the knowledge to answer that question. Maybe I need to go back to high school. But I'll talk to Mr. Francho about that.
Yeah, because I think, you know, because, you know, a lot of people, if it's supposed to be the general equivalency test on the graduation, I think if it's going to be mandatory upon graduation, I think it should be mandatory on GED also, because education is important, and we can't skimp on that on any chance whatsoever. We cannot be allowed to skip on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Councilmember Siemens will convey the question about the GED to the comptroller. So then we have one more.
Yes, the final bill is a resolution supporting the payment of stormwater fees by governmental entities. There are at least two bills that are for the General Assembly addressing this. One has to do with whether Montgomery County should pay stormwater fees within municipalities. That bill also requires any municipality that owns property outside of, in the unincorporated county to pay fees to the county. There is also a bill that would require the state government to pay stormwater fees to a municipality for property it owns within a state, within a municipality. Therefore, this draft resolution is written generally so that it can apply to a variety of different, of these resolutions, which simply would say that governmental entities should pay stormwater utility fees on the properties they own to help compensate for the process of stormwater management.
And I'll just add two bits of information that I learned in the last week about these pieces of legislation. It appears that, I'll say most, I won't say all, because I'm not sure about that, most other counties in the state of Maryland do pay stormwater fee to the municipalities within their boundaries. And my understanding is that the current Montgomery County stormwater fee only applies to residential property and not commercial property. And that may, in some bizarre way, begin to explain why the county hasn't wanted to pay either the Rockville stormwater fee or the Tacoma Park stormwater fee, because our fees apply to all properties in the municipality.
No, that's incorrect.
I have it confirmed today.
But the state, well, state law, though, very specifically exempts governmental entities from being subject to the stormwater utility fees, and I did have that confirmed by the city attorney's office this past week. So this is, the legislation specifically addresses that portion of state law that exempts governmental entities from those provisions. Now, they can, they can voluntarily do that.
And that may be the case, but that, my understanding is that most do. So we can both be right.
Good.
Any other comments on this? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Did it get moved?
Oh, sorry.
I don't think it was moved.
Moved, moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda at 10:01 p.m. on Valentine's Day, is discussion of large grant requests. We moved this item onto the agenda because we thought the agenda was so light, we could move something off of a heavy night onto this one. Little did we know.
It's only 10 o'clock.
Oh, it's not that bad. It's only 10:00. We've been here till midnight and nothing.
I know.
Do you want to duke it out over these five items or something?
But we, yeah, we're talking about, but we actually had a scheduled adjournment before 10:00, which is unusual.
We do that every week.
Boy, you're so right.
We were optimistic.
Who's the big black today?
All right, this year, the city solicited applications for large grant requests, and we received five applications by the deadline. There was a request from Crossroads Farmers Market for $20,000 for market support. A new group called EduCare Support Services, Inc., they requested $94,800 to start a new program. The Old Tacoma Business Association requested $30,000. The Tacoma Park Folk Festival has requested $7,000 in festival support, and the Tacoma Park Independent State Committee has requested $13,500. And these applications were emailed to the City Council, and there's a hard copy in the council conference room upstairs. So the council is asked to provide guidance to the city manager on which, if any, of the requests should be considered for inclusion in her proposed budget for fiscal year 2012, subject to the availability of funds.
Just a reminder, this is guidance to the city manager. The final decision on all of these will be the councils as we discuss the budget. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought the proposals were all very interesting, and I support all except the EduCare Support Services. I think that one is not providing the kind of activities that we've traditionally done with these grants. It's a, they're starting a new program, it'll be ongoing, and it's doing services that the county should be providing. So I, that's the only one I wouldn't include, and then I would reduce the funding levels for the Crossroads Farmers Market to something like $15,000, and the Old Town Business Association to $20,000, and leave the others alone.
I'm not going to comment on the Folk Festival since I'm the chair this year, but Pam Morrison is the co-chair, and she's in the audience if you have any questions. So I support the Independent State Committee and the Business Association, and I would agree about the, just starting a new program around the EduCare Support Services. The comment I wanted to make was really about the Crossroads Farmers Market, because if you look, because, Councilmember Snipper, you said reduce it to $15,000, but they're actually only asking for $10,000 this year in this grant process, but if you look, yeah.
I thought it was $20,000.
No, what's happening is that they're getting CDBG money. So for fiscal year 10, they got $10,000 from CDBG and $10,860 from the general fund. And then fiscal year 11, so that was $20,800. This year, they're actually asking for $35,000. We're giving them $25,000 from CDBG, and they're asking for an additional $10,000 beyond the, beyond the general fund money. And then they're slated for $25,000 for fiscal year 11, and I guess my sense would be that the CDBG money should be enough to sustain them when they first came to us, and they were looking to have 20 or 25,000 for a couple of years and then have it taper off as they became independent. I don't want to be stingy with the farmers market, but it seems like 25,000 is more money than we had originally agreed to give them when they came forward with the business plan. So I think before I would be convinced to support more money for that. I would like to hear a really compelling reason from them. I doubt that they're going to compel me in that way.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm in general agreement with what the comments, I'm thinking that the Independent State Committee, it's a lot of money, and I know they have other fundraising, so I'd put them at 10. I'm okay with 7 for the Folk Festival. I'm okay with the Business Association at 30. Like Councilmember Clay, I think that the CDBG money ought to satisfy the Crossroads, and I was also thinking about EduCare, that that's not something that we would want to fund this year.
Councilmember, I lost my tally. Schultz.
Oh, that's me. There you go. I think I would agree with Councilmember Clay with regard to the Crossroads Farmers Market request for $20,000. I think that their proposal is extremely detailed and well-written. It's practically a model for how a grant request ought to be submitted, but they've got so many different sources of money to their, which goes to their credit, and at the same time, their program is expanding not only in terms of its size, but in terms of its objectives, that it's confusing to understand exactly how the $20,000 is going to, you know, what it does and what they would do if they didn't get it. In other words, what's the difference? So I think, I'm interested in trying to provide them some money since they're in my ward, but I do think I need to get, like Councilmember Clay said, a little bit better compelling explanation as to the need for that $20,000. With regard to EduCare, their application is short on facts and data and long on saying that there is a large population in Tacoma Park, which has a population they claim twice the size of what it actually is, and assert that there's no one providing a food program for the poor, when in fact, we know that there are such programs here. Whether they're adequate or not's an argument for another day. I just feel that, and it's already been stated, that to basically finance a program as, to provide the ongoing funds for a program, isn't really what large grants are intended for. They're intended for specified purposes. I also noticed, I would point out, is that their entire board of directors is from all over the metropolitan area, so it's a little hard for me to understand why this program would particularly be focused on Tacoma Park, other than the offices are located at a church on New Hampshire Avenue. So it's not clear to me to what extent people in Tacoma Park would be receiving whatever assistance they were providing as distinguished from people from anywhere else in the region. The other three programs here, I'm comfortable with the funding levels that are proposed.
I see the laydown over here. Did one of you have a clarification?
I just wanted to clarify that the Crossroads Farmers Market, and maybe I misheard Councilmember Clay, but they did request $20,000 for fiscal year 12, not $10,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at, oh, it's a prior distribution. I see, I'm sorry. I was mistaken, because the number here says 10,000, but that's for last year.
Okay. Councilmember Wright?
So just to clarify, though, in FY '12, they are slated to get or applying for $25,000 in CDGB funds, is that correct? I think I'm in a very... I think I'm in a very similar place to Councilmember Robinson. I would fully fund the Independence Day Committee, the Folk Festival, and the Business Association at the requested amounts. I would not fund the Crossroads Farmers Market at their requested amount, because they're getting CGB money, unless my colleague, Councilmember Schultz, were to convince me otherwise or give me some reason that, for his ward, he wanted this to happen, I would change my perspective on that. I see no reason to fund EduCare. It's a dollar amount that's way outside of anything we've, I think, ever really done in these types of grants. It's not clear that they, they are connected really to Tacoma Park deeply, and if you look at all of these other things, these are really community, you know, efforts that have pretty deep roots in the community. I mean, the farmers market has the least deep roots, only because they're the newest in the crossroads, but these are all kind of deeply rooted community activities with lots of individuals from the community engaged.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I will exclude myself from any discussion of the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, since I am a member of that group. I'm very supportive of the funding request by the Tacoma Park Folk Festival and also the Old Town Business Association. I share my colleagues' hesitancy to fund the EduCare Support Services. And then lastly, I'd like to say about the Crossroads Farmers Market, and make it clear, first of all, that I am an advisor to the board of the Crossroads Farmers Market, but I'm, I have no voting authority with that. And so I would like to just say that before, I would encourage my colleagues, before they make a decision on the funding request, that we do get additional information from the organization, and I believe they requested a chance to come here and talk to us about it. I don't know if it was during a public comment, or is it actually an agenda item they're going to?
I remember the request, and I don't remember how we decided to handle that. Do you remember?
We had suggested that if the council wanted to interview them in this process, that that would, might be an appropriate time to invite them to come, rather than have them come before you considered their grant application.
I appreciate that, because the, you know, they are doing some pretty fantastic things, and it's been a struggle to get the new farmers markets started in that area, but I think they've made some incredible headway, as Councilmember Schultz points out, that they have been able to get some, some good support from other organizations. They've looked at alternatives for how to move the organization forward, and I think it'd be important for this council to hear that before making a decision on their funding request.
And I'm supportive of the forms asked for, the Independence Day Committee, the Folk Festival, and OTBA, and I will schedule the Crossroads Farmers Market to come. I'm interested to hear, and it sounds like we're going to just wait to figure that one out, and we'll try and have that presentation sooner rather than later to provide the city manager with information that she needs in a timely fashion. Any other questions?
Could we just ask the Crossroads Farmers Market to help us understand their longer-term sustainability plan, or prepare to talk about that when they do come, because I know it's been a discussion in the past about how many years it would take to be sustainable, and it's been kind of a moving target. Just want to understand that.
Anything else? Return.